Okay. Welcome to our Thursday, August 4th, 2022 Policy Committee meeting. And thank you all for moving it to this day. And I hope everyone enjoyed the national night out on Tuesday. We had like 100 people in our neighborhood, so we had a really fun. And the police and the fire department all came. That was really great. So jumping into our agenda, we do not have any policies for the first reading, but we do for the second reading have policy 208 and 209. And again, these were reviewed back in June. And they were also on our agenda for our retreat. And I want to see if there's any questions or comments about them. Again, the first one is our own board policy on development, adoption, and implementation of policies. And then the second policy, 209 Quote of Ethics. So we'll start with the first one if there's any comments or discussion. Hi, Anthony.
I would just say that I appreciate that the board is being very thoughtful about what the policy on policy development will be, because I think one of the most important roles of the school board is to craft policy. And so having a clear guidance on how we do it is important.
That is exactly right. And that is one of our main roles, as well as, I think we, as we've talked in previous meetings and at the retreat, we've been putting together a really good process to review them in a more systematic way since this policy committee was developed two years ago now. And we're really working, as we can see by our healthy agenda today, to move quite a few policies as well. So any other comments on 208?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Superintendent Bonds or Assistant Superintendent Bonds or Superintendent Magus can help clarify this. Because I do know we had some emergency policies that came up with COVID. Have we gone back and revisited all those to either terminate those policies or rewrite those as needed moving forward?
So they had, most of the policies that we worked with had a sunset clause. The one that we did decide to keep was related to graduation requirements because of the number of credits that students would need. We decided to stick with the state rate or the state minimum graduation rate as opposed to, we had one credit more previously. And so we decided that since students had unfinished learning, we wanted to keep that as a little extra safety net so that we're not raising the bar and a hard time for students.
So we're aligned with the state policy?
Yes. And it's acceptable. Yes, very much. We do have, and I think things happen from time to time that come somewhat unexpectedly, like we have some policies on the agenda after our regular policy group couple, policies for immediate adoption. And this is a certain, you know, different circumstances. Say there's an emergency in the community and we need a board policy related to chemical spills or something like that, that might be something that is needed unexpectedly. These policies for immediate adoption were recommended by MSBA because of recent changes in the state statutes related to, first, compensation for school board members. So there was an increase in the amount of money that school board members could be compensated. The second was the change in laws related to THC edibles. So we needed to make sure that we were changing our policies on drug-free workplace and alcohol drug testing. So it's reflective of those. And then internet acceptable use and safety policy. There were some things related to data and use of student data and that were part of the recent legislation. So those are kind of like quick changes, COVID quick changes. They're open to take care of.
So when we get into for immediate adoption, that's what's really going on with all of those?
Yes.
It's state, changes to state law that affect us and affect our policies.
And just a reminder, I know we've reviewed this before, that it's pretty common that by, in our case, our August policy meeting, that the NSBA and some of the other state associations, like the superintendents, they will have reviewed the policy changes that came out of the legislative session and then made recommendations for us to either immediately adopt or know that these are the statute changes to them. And so we generally get that. And thank you, Patty, for sending that out from NSBA. And then it's up to us as a district to review those changes every year and either adopt immediately if that's what is recommended or as we're reviewing policies to adopt. So this is kind of pretty standard every August that we will get information from our associations to move forward going into the school year.
Is it fair to say the policies may not have changed a terrible amount, but they need, like Superintendent said, need to reflect the current legislature?
That's very fair to say.
Yeah.
Any other comments on that, Dan? Okay. And, you know, just again, and we can emphasize this if we want during, when we adopt it in the second reading, but under 5B, it does just remind the public that the school board reviews policies at least once every three years. And that there are a couple, or three policies that annually are reviewed. There's actually a few more, but the ones, 506, Student Discipline, 722, Public Data Request, and 806, Prices Management. And obviously, we as a district have a lot of different practices with these policies already as well. So we will then move to the next one, Policy 209 Quote of Ethics. And this is again, the second reading on that. And the purpose of this policy is to assist school board members in understanding, is her role as part of the school board, recognizing the contribution each member must make to develop and be an effective and responsible school board member. And it highlights, again, kind of key functions of a school board, maintaining relations with other school board members, meeting my responsibilities to the community, working with the superintendent and school staff, and fulfilling my legal obligations as a school board member. So this is for review. The last time we reviewed it was in 2018. And again, this is the second reading. Any comments or questions on the Quote of Ethics?
Just to comment to anyone that's up there watching, you know, or may watch this tomorrow, just that this is a really good resource too, to know what the roles and responsibilities of a school board member are. And yeah, I think it's just good to know. And it's something that I looked at before deciding to run for school. So it's very comprehensive.
Thank you for that comment, Amber. I know when I've met with people who showed an interest in running for the school board, that was one of the pieces I would make copies of for them to really thoughtfully reflect on. So.
I also want to say that I appreciate the time that the board has spent in various workshops and working on how we apply the Quote of Ethics as well. I think that's really helpful. And I heard a quote yesterday about this type of work. And they said, the best time to repair a roof is, as well, is still sunny up, right? And I think that that's true, that by us doing this while things are functioning, high functioning, it's better than trying to fix things when we're having challenges.
Thank you. And I really appreciate, like, each of these sections underneath here. So moving through. Okay, then the next one, and I'm going to turn this over a little bit to Superintendent Magus, but Policies for Immediate Adoption. And again, for the reasons we just talked about, these have came up for us to do an immediate adoption. And do you want me to take them or do you want to kind of go one by one?
I could talk just a little bit about how we have them in Board Book right now. So we have the policy for adoption. And then we have the MSBA policy for adoption with the notes. So basically, it's got notes within it explaining why are they proposing this? So it's kind of the cheat sheet, so to speak, of explaining various parts of the policy. So that's almost more helpful than just the policy itself, but that would not, of course, be part of the routine policy. And then afterwards is the policy that we would have had in place prior. So like there was the 8045 policy is the same as the 210 that we'll be adopting. So it might be helpful for everybody as we go through and look at the one with notes. And for this particular policy, 210 is regarding the change in amount that a school board member can earn over the course of the year. And it had been previously $8,000. That through substitute work, you know, several of our board members are substitutes. And I think this was changed partly this year because of the massive shortages of employees. And when we were, when people were begging school board members to drive school buses and serve as paras and serve in that capacity, it was recognition that we want to allow people to work who want to work in schools. So that's the only major change.
I think some of that came about too to kind of take the handcuffs off smaller districts, smaller districts where their employee base is smaller. And I guess school board members might drive a school bus. And their needs are great also.
Yes, you're exactly right, Paul. When I attended the NSBA Delegate Assembly last December, and this actually came up the December before, and that's where we review policies. And then we make recommendations to the NSBA lobbyists to move forward. That was discussed in particular for the reasons you just talked about, smaller districts. And so this, in terms of that section of this policy, that is very true. And it was brought forward from some smaller rural districts as well. So any other questions concerning that one?
So just curiosity, so these would be examples of policies that basically every school district and the state would be updating?
Yeah, and thus was recommended, that they take immediate action, given the timing?
And many do, I wouldn't say all do, but MSBA recommended that we do. So and these were shared out by MSBA at the end of last week. And so Thursday, I think it was. And so to have policies out and ready for the start of the school year is really tough. And we appreciate the board being flexible with this. This is a way we're moving through things. I think especially, and I know we're talking about the policies, but thinking, for instance, about the internet acceptable use and safety policy, we're bringing it forward because they would very much like to have a policy in place when the year begins. We may, through the internal work, determine that there are certain aspects that need to change as early as next month. So we might, if there's, let's just say there's, say there's a component that can't be executed as fully or in a different way, we may need to come back to the board with requests for additional modification.
Not only need to, in examination of it, we will be coming back. But the policy, a lot of policies that exist now that's being recommended for immediate adoption, there isn't anything in here that's problematic. So there isn't anything that will cause any kind of interruption in services to our students or staff or families. It just provides additional protection. But as Superintendent said, we have to really review it as a team. And the team will be on board fully in the next couple of weeks. So we'll do a lot of vetting of it. And I'm certain we will bring it back, modifications to this policy.
Thanks for sharing that now. That's good to know.
Okay, so that's, again, couple of interests. Policy 210 will be replacing policy 84. The next, 8045, the next one is Policy 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing, replacing policies 4035 and 4050. And if you want to speak towards that, Superintendent Magus?
And again, these two policies were focused on the change and the sudden change in the marijuana edibles laws. Basically, we're needing to make sure that that's reflective within, reflected within our policies. We don't currently test employees unless there's significant suspicion or if they are required to have a commercial driver's license. So bus drivers and other drivers who are driving professionally. But we are also putting these in place just because, particularly the drug and alcohol use at school one, because we, of course, couldn't have people under the influence of edibles or alcohol network. Director Severance, is there anything else that you would note? Or are you through?
Not really. I mean, it's comparative to what our previous policy, older policies, there's a lot more definition, there's a lot more description that I think is good to just support the process. So that's primarily along with what Superintendent Magus said related to noting the cannabis pieces in there. So you'll see it's a much longer policy than it was before, but they've added a lot of detail in them that probably should have been in there previously. So I think it's just much more explanatory.
It had also been a while since we had updated our policies. So there were likely policies between the policy we currently have and the one that we're bringing forward that were probably steps in that direction too. And one thing, as you pointed out, Chair Loflerkamp, is that these have been vetted very heavily by the School Board Association and their legal teams. So, you know, taking stuff out or kind of Frankenstein-ing things together is not advised because it's structured in a way where they don't recommend a significant change.
So I have a question or a question, I guess, really. When we had the incident last year, and I don't want to go into details on that, but how does this work then for a bus company we might contract with? Are we assuming they're responsible for doing their testing with their bus drivers? I mean, they would need to follow the same policy here.
They would have to follow the federal, which is what ours is based on as well. So there are federal requirements related to the policy.
So they're responsible for the testing of their own drivers that might be filling in or covering part of our district and/or astrotunes to activities or whatever.
Yes.
Right, so their internal policy might be slightly different than our internal policy, but it still is executed in the same federal mandate?
And it states that at the beginning of 416 in the notes section, drug and alcohol testing with school bus drivers and applicants is mandatory under federal law. Kind of expands on that, but, you know, it leads with that. Any other questions on that one? Thank you, Teresa, for your review of this from a HR perspective. Really appreciate that. Then the next policy is Policy 418, Drug-Free Workplace/Drug-Free School, replacing Policy 4036. Comment on that one?
Yeah, I think this one, you know, again, is very similar to the reasons for the previous policy, adding up some definitions and things that maybe had been changed over the years and we had not reviewed this policy in some time. But this does then, again, address the edibles piece. So you'll see it is a little bit longer than our previous. But when I look at the comparative, it's, again, a lot of the procedures are listed within here, as well as the definitions, things that maybe were not present before.
And, you know, just the point that Superintendent Magus made about, and I had made earlier, about our school board association and our legal team and reviewing, at the end of every policy has all of the legal references, the statutes that they're cross-referenced with. So I kind of find that interesting sometimes to spend some time just reading those. And then, you know, again, the cross-references with the Minnesota Superintendents Association, NSBA. So we do work hand in hand with those cross-references as well. So we're lucky they have legal teams of the size that they have. Any other questions though about Policy 418? Okay, then Policy 524, and this is the internet acceptable use and safety policy,
So looking at this policy, again, this is crafted based in part on the new language that has come through the Minnesota statute, Section 125B.26. Basically, what the intent of the legislature was to have more strict limitation on sharing of data, student data. And at one point, it was quite broad where parents could opt out of almost all of our technology systems. But that would force the district and other districts to go to like, you know, pen and paper files for kids on things. And so that was deemed as not reasonable. But what they have done in general is place very strict limitations on when we're working with an outside technology company, that say a subscription service or some curriculum resource, that they are not selling that information externally to others, that they can use some de-identified, you know, data on how many students are using it or what type of students are using it or what type of success. But they can't sell kids data, basically, is what this is intended for. And I know you're here partly for tech purposes, but is there anything else that you would add?
Yeah, I was going to ask Barbie, you're here. Is there anything you want to share with us?
Yeah, we looked at actually Policy 524 probably 10 years ago. If you look at our 3187 and 524, you'll see the first four items are exactly the same as we pulled up from that and used that. And Policy 524 will actually replace 3187 and 3187R because they had a lot more items in there to match, you know, what we already got in our policy. But they do talk about the updated student data privacy, which we didn't have because that just passed this law. And they, you know, talk about some other things in there that we didn't have with our policies.
Was this something your association, that you're involved with, if IT people were also involved with?
It was more of the student data privacy. You're, you know, working on that with pretty much all the other Minnesota school district directors. And most of the school districts already have adopted it positively. If you look at a lot of the metro schools, they already just referenced that.
Great, anything else on that one, Dan?
Mr. Bonds, anything from your lens considering?
No, I shared earlier, because I thought we had jumped to that. So as I shared, at first glance, we know for, I'm certain that we will be coming back to the board with modifications to this policy as there are things in here that we have to really vet as a team to make sure that we can actually accomplish these things and make sure we have the procedures in place to address the things that are being asked for here. So we will definitely be meeting as a team to come up with those recommendations and how we bring this back to board.
I was actually, at my night out party, I had a parent of middle school kids really talk about some of the adoptions that had to do with cell phones as well, which is kind of technology safety that our district has taken that they have been very supportive of. So, yeah. Okay, then the next one is Policies for Review. And so we don't need to adopt this, we just need to review it. And so it's Policy 44, Employment Background Checks. And HR Director Teresa, we do speak towards that just briefly?
So what brought this in to review is we are changing the process that we do for play background checks. We have for many years done a paper, some middle form to the BCA, waiting for that response to then come back, which has been a little, you know, time crunch in certain situations. So we are moving to electronic background checks, which I think a lot of districts are already doing. So in reviewing this, just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing any violation because of that practice going through that. And the background check policy as it exists today is the same as the MSBA current policy. So we would just recommend a review and knowing that we've looked at it and updated it, or looked to see if we needed to update it with the new practice change.
I just thought that when this was brought forward, that it just would be an opportunity, you know, also for school board members to be updated as well as the community. So again, we don't have to adopt, just review, and an opportunity for you guys if you have any questions.
If I could just make a comment, I would say one thing that we always look for in our leadership is, do they really embrace continuous improvement? And are they looking at just how can they improve small pieces of our system so that we have better outcomes? And I think this is a great example of Director Severance, your work in looking at how can we create better outcomes in our hiring process? And there was a term you used when we're talking about measure.
Cycle time to hire.
Cycle time to hire. So this is something that will improve our cycle time to hire, which is basically, once we start talking to somebody, how long does it take us to get the person in the job? Because not only does it make it more user-friendly for the person from a customer service perspective, but it also means that sometimes we end up keeping and hiring somebody that we might lose if it's taken too long. So thank you for that work. And I also want to say thanks to Patty Paquette, who has done a tremendous job with all that information related to policies that came out at the very last minute, making sure that it was in format and ready to roll.
Quickly, quickly, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to just add that too. I, you know, at my night out party, people know I'm on the school board, so I get hit up with lots of really positive things of what's going on. But it was exciting to kind of mention this to someone who's retired and now is thinking about subbing in our district. And I was like, wow, you'll find the background checks a lot easier. So thank you for that. Any other questions, Amber or Paul on 404?
No questions, just appreciate the explanation and the dedication, I guess, to being more efficient, especially as we've had a hard time filling certain positions. This is just one of those small pieces of the puzzle, I think, that'll help with that.
Okay, well then the last one again is informational, and it's a regulation, so 524R Internet Regulations, replacing 3187R. And it's really renumbering, is this policy? Is there anything else that you should, anybody wants to say about that besides the renumbering?
Well, just the renumbering in the same vein as the 524, we will be reviewing it to see if there's any modifications that I need based off of the new policy that we're creating for.
Board members, do you have any questions?
Are any of these internet use regulations, do they end up in our student handbook at all? These, I'm just curious.
Some of them, because one, you know, if there's a violation, it's a violation in a, a policy could end up having to receive consequences as well. So normally in our handbook, certain policies are embedded in the student handbook as things that parents and the families and students are expected to be, and be aware of. I've been amazed in the past, meaning Bart can speak to this too, if the students go somewhere they don't belong, how quickly it can get to that teacher in the computer lab in that building. Under, again, those unfortunate circumstances that we got, something going astray.
You might find it interesting under this one, under just some of the references of policy 524, when the Children's Internet Protection Act passed, Protecting Children in the 21st Century Act. I kind of remember some of the conversations around those and board members might find that interesting to go back to that reference. Okay, then I think that is it. These will come up again at August 16th board meeting. And we'll just be doing the second reading, the immediate adoption. And I think all of that will fall under that consent agenda. So unless we have any other comments or questions, we are done with our policy meeting. I don't really think longer. Thank you.
Thank you.